Go ahead and get started. This is the Board of Trustees of Platte County Health Department. And this is a regular session meeting, 6:00 PM, July 17th, 2025. We'll go with the opening roll call.
Susan Cole here.
Kim Swainy here.
Zach Gronke here.
Michael Chaffay here.
I'm glad to be just the United States of America. And you're the representative of what you stand on nations. For God.
Great. We have guests and public attendees.
So we do, Kim, I know you're running the meeting tonight. So we do have on the agenda, public comments. So I'm not sure if you'd like to move that up to the top. And then as they introduce themselves, they can introduce themselves first. But then we can go around and give the opportunity for anyone to speak who wants to speak.
I think that's the best. Introduce yourself first and then.
So we'll just go around the room and introduce them. If you're with an entity, tell us which entity. And we'll just start over here.
Sure. Alex Qualieri, co-founder of Deviant Cava. Thank you for having us.
I'm Anne Straight. I'm on behalf of Deviant Cava.
Wes Ray, co-founder of Deviant Cava.
David Worland, here with Platte County Health Department. Goodbye, Sean. Here with Platte County Health Department.
And online, Taylor.
Taylor Ryan, virtually on behalf of Deviant Cava as well.
Um, I would actually ask if you want to speak, if you can come up to the front. But this preacher in the middle is called a meeting owl. And it is what's recording the meeting. It's all off the phone. And so folks online will be able to hear you if you want to just come up to the podium.
Oh, perfect.
So if all three of you want to speak or?
I think I'm going to speak and then Taylor is going to speak.
Worth your way up there. Then we'll take you out of the corner. No one puts you in the corner.
Yes, not today. All right. Is this an okay spot for me to be recorded?
Uh, I think as soon as you start talking, we will find out.
Great, Kingsley.
So go ahead and you can start.
Great. Well, good evening. My name is Anne Straight. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Deviant Cava, not as an owner, but to offer a different perspective from the legal argument you will shortly hear. My husband Wes is one of the owners of Deviant Cava. So I do not pretend to have an unbiased or objective viewpoint on this matter. However, I do think it would benefit the board to hear from someone who has been able to witness firsthand the incredible community that a place like Deviant Cava provides from someone who was initially a skeptic. When Wes first started working at a cava bar back in 2019 in Florida, I was hesitant. He had previously managed fine dining establishments and coffee shops. I did not understand what this new product was or who could possibly be asking for it. As someone who has never tried an illegal drug in her life and who currently works in a job where I could get fired for using lotion with CBD in it, I was very hesitant to learn more about this new to me tea and what effects it could possibly have. I was so cautious, it took me over a year to even try a sip of it, even though I had long known that it was perfectly safe and legal. I just wasn't interested in learning about something new. Once I spent more time in the cava bars in Florida, I realized what an incredible asset they were to their communities. These businesses provided spaces for adults to engage with one another socially without consuming any intoxicating substances and to make the kinds of social connections we so often lack these days. We witnessed deep friendships that have developed, business partnerships that have flourished and romantic relationships that have turned into marriages that were officiated by the owners of the cava bars. I've never been in a space in my life where such deep and meaningful connections are fostered, particularly now that we live in a world where in-person interactions are so often transactional and so much of our socializing happens online. We are so grateful that over, after over three months of waiting for approval, we were able to open our doors in a limited capacity at the beginning of July. Even though Wes and I have spent the better part of a year trying to get to know the Parkville community, we were shocked by the immediate response once we opened. Since day one, we have welcomed a steady stream of visitors through our doors, many of whom walk in saying, we are so excited you are finally open. We have been waiting and waiting. I'll have a cava. And we have to say, no, unfortunately, we cannot currently sell cava in its traditional form. This is immediately met with confusion. But I've been to cava bars all over the country, they say. I've had traditional cava in many cities. It's not illegal. Does Missouri have special legislation banning it? No, we explained, Missouri has not passed any regulations regarding cava. So then has Parkville or has Platte County, they ask, confused? No, we try to explain, we researched all federal, state and local regulations extensively before we purchased this building and poured money into renovations and obtained all of our equipment. Missouri, Platte County and the city of Parkville all operate under the exact same rules as Florida and Colorado and California and the countless locations across the country where over 400 cava bars are currently operating. The regulations here are identical to those governing the cava bar that is currently serving traditional cava in Midtown Kansas City, as well as being less restrictive than the one operating in St. Charles, Missouri. The frustration that this causes among our patrons is evident. We cannot offer a logical explanation to them as to why the Platte County Health Department has denied our permit to sell traditional cava and cratom. I'm speaking to you today because I fear that in an attempt to be overly cautious, the Platte County Health Department immediately escalated this issue into a legal debate rather than having a common sense discussion among you, the board members. More than anyone, I understand the caution. But this issue is not trivial. It's our livelihood and we've been very patient. I think this merits an open and honest discussion among the board. Deviant Cava was not founded to become a coffee shop on Main Street, Parkville. We have no desire to be a competitor to the already flourishing coffee shops that are currently operating there. Our business model is based on the preparation and sale of traditional cava and cratom. Every day that we are prohibited from preparing and selling those items affects our bottom line. And we have yet to hear a reasonable denial, explanation for this denial. In the two weeks we've been open, we have already developed regulars who come in every day and are greeted by name. These include young professionals looking for a place to work remotely, older couples that have never even heard of cava, families that are excited to have a place to gather out of the summer heat and sober individuals who are excited to have a place that they can be alcohol-free. We've already become an important part of the fabric of Main Street, Parkville, and we are only getting started. Once we're able to serve cava, we know that we will attract visitors from all over the KC area, tourists coming to Kansas City and of course, our beloved Parkville locals. We're so grateful that you've taken the time to listen to us tonight. We hope we're able to discuss this further and remove these roadblocks to our fully functioning business. We welcome any questions that you have and we invite you to visit us in our space and see our beautifully designed community area so that we can show you in person what we're trying to accomplish. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Taylor, you want next?
Yes, if I could be heard, that would be great. Um, so thanks for the opportunity to speak to you again. It was good to meet you last time. I'm the general counsel for Deviant Cava. And I'm compelled today to respond to some of the board's discussion I heard at the last meeting. It is unfortunate that our dialogue is limited to the five minutes per month that I'm allowed to speak. And I think some back and forth discussion would go a long way on this very important issue that our business is facing, but I will make the most of my time today. It's the impression of Deviant Cava that a good faith effort has not been made to determine whether the county's position on cava and cratom tea is actually correct. And this is based on some of the justifications that were given last month for the denial. But first, I'd like to address the policy that was recently implemented, allowing Deviant Cava to sell retail products containing cava and cratom. This policy requires a warning sign that essentially says, the Platte County Health Department does not inspect these items for safety, does not endorse them, and customers should be aware of the risks. Now, there are many retail items sold in food establishments that are not inspected by the health department because it is outside of your purview, including things such as energy drinks and even alcohol. And these items have a history of scientific evidence showing that they're harmful to humans. Yet no businesses are required to display a sign saying the health department doesn't endorse these drinks, these energy drinks, that there's tons of scientific literature saying that they're harmful. This policy appears uniquely tailored to cava and cratom beverages to the exclusion of other retail products routinely sold at food establishments that are not inspected or endorsed by the health department. And not only does it appear uniquely targeted at our products, it appears uniquely targeted at our business only. We have visited several other food establishments in the county carrying cava and cratom products in retail form in the past month and have not seen the sign displayed anywhere else. So I would appreciate some discussion on why this policy exists just for cava and cratom instead of analogous products and also why it applies just to our business. Uh, but second, to discuss some of those justifications I heard last month that were cited by the board in support of our denial of cava and cratom being served at a food establishment. Two very poignant and very important questions were actually raised by a member of the board itself when discussing these issues. And I was glad they were raised, but I was not glad with the response that I heard. The first was, what authority exactly are we relying on to say that these herbal teas are food additives and not foods? And the second was, how do we explain the fact that St. Charles allows these to be served when they have the same laws and the same food code, yet we're not allowing it? And the answers given to these questions leads me to believe that the county is more interested in finding a way to ban these products than it is in following the law. When discussing the issue of, for example, food versus food additive, the board's answer it landed on was that when you add cava or cratom to water, you're adding it to a food and therefore it's a food additive. And one member of the board said, I know Mr. Ryan disagrees with us on that point, but that's our position. And this disappointed me because I provided research to support our position. I discussed last month, federal precedent that explicitly discusses the addition of water to a single active ingredient food. And that authority says that it's quite ridiculous to hold that adding water to a single ingredient food renders it a food additive. So this isn't a situation where we agree to disagree. There's federal law directly on point. It's not about my opinion and what I think. It's about what the law says. And I would hope that the department has legal authority it relies on to support its own determination that water turns something into a food additive. And a good faith inquiry would result in that legal authority being shared or at least articulated. I, I think we are at least owed an explanation for the basis of your interpretation because the denial is effectively really harming our business. You know, we are allowed to open, but at this point, we're akin to a tire shop that can't install tires. You know, we can sell air fresheners, we can sell air filters, we can sell tires, but we can't put them on your car. And that really destroys the entire purpose of what the business is. So if the county really feels strongly about the correctness of its decision, I would love to hear what the basis of that decision is. And I, I hope that the board feels comfortable with the legal efficacy of that decision. Um, regarding the question of St. Charles County versus Platte County, another very important and illustrative question, uh, I'm glad that was raised. And I would extend that question to include the hundreds of other counties that are allowing cava and cratom to be served in food establishments. Why is it allowed there and not here when Platte County's position is that federal regulation adopted by both counties doesn't allow it? Uh, because I'll admit, there is a possibility that every other county in the country is wrong and is interpreting the FDA regulations incorrectly and that Platte County Health Department has a right. But that's not the most likely, uh, resolution. In fact, it would be extraordinary if everyone else was wrong. And that difference in interpretation, at the very least, calls for a very detailed explanation. Extraordinary claims call for extraordinary evidence. But the answer the board landed on when that question was raised was, well, St. Charles County passed legislation that regulates the sale of cratom. That's why it's allowed there, even though they have the same laws regarding adulterance and food additives. And that was the end of the discussion, which again, is a very disappointing answer to this pivotal question that's gravely affecting our business. Firstly, where does that leave cava? St. Charles ordinances only include cratom, yet cava tea is served in St. Charles and you're prohibiting it here. So if that is your justification, where does that leave cava and your justification for why that can't be sold here? So that doesn't sound like a good faith answer. And as to cratom.
We have gone over five minutes at this point. If you want to wrap it up, I'll give you enough 30 seconds.
Let, yeah, Taylor, we hear you loud and clear. If you want to wrap it up, I think we'll be ready to, uh, to see what we can do.
Sure. I have some more I'd like to say, but I'll come back in a month and I can finish then. Um, in, in closing, I, I want to ask the board to really take a, take a deep look at this issue and make sure that it's correct about this because our business is suffering from this decision. And when you look at the law, the ordinance in St. Charles County, it doesn't remove restrictions on cratom. In fact, it adds restrictions. So if that's the county's justification, it really doesn't make sense. So I think we're owed a reasoning for why that this county believes it's correct and everyone else is wrong when this is so materially affecting our business and will destroy it. Uh, but I thank you for your time. Uh, you know, I know you guys are all very busy and you have a lot to cover. Thanks for allowing us to continue to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'd like to just briefly respond. And my suggestion is, it sounds as though you've had some conversations with Jen Snyder. We have had actually closed meetings, internal dialogue, and we have reviewed the legal ramifications of it. However, I hear your argument. I just don't subscribe to the point of view that because other people are doing something makes it okay. Uh, we have had and looked at the FDA regulations and certainly consider certain slippery slope issues. But our charge is to protect the health and wellness of the citizens of Platte County. If that means violating the FDA regulations, uh, or changing them or reinterpreting them, that's something that maybe it's going to take more than a month for us to sit down and look at. But I think we've, uh, any of the other board members who are on, I think we've had at least a half hour meeting looking at where do we stand? What is our role if not to take a look and say, is this a food additive? And that's the charge of the county. And that if the FDA doesn't approve it as, as a food additive, we can have these discussions offline. In fact, I'd be happy to meet with you. I'd be happy to meet with the owners. Be happy to have discussions. Anytime, I'm unfortunately on vacation. And unfortunately, I was on vacation last month, so I couldn't attend the meeting. But, uh, I think we can have good dialogue about this. Uh, and it doesn't have to be during a meeting. Uh, I'd, I'd be open to being reached out to. And I know, I think Dr. Kingsley and I, and I can't speak for the other board members, but I, you know, certainly happy to, to sit down and kind of look at the situation.
The only caution, the only caution I would interject is, you know, two board members is fine. Once we give them three, it's a meeting, so we can't have a meeting.
You bet. No, I think there could be some dialogue to figure out how, how other places are doing this, how it's, we just, we want to follow the FDA rules. We want to do, we want to do our job. And, uh, the law as it is written and interpreted by our legal counsel uh, is I think how we arrived at it, but that doesn't mean we can't take another look. So I can only speak for myself, not the board. I'm willing to, to take a, a, a deep, serious look at this to see if there are some things we can do while protecting the health and wellness of the citizens of Platte County and not violating the FDA. So thank you for your time and, uh, I'll be back, uh, late Saturday night, but sometime next week. Uh, anybody who wants to reach out to me, please do.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Either of you want to speak or are you good?
I think I covered it all.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. I mean, yeah. Well, I would love to meet Michael, you know?
His email website or I can write it down for you before you leave.
Thank you.
Yep. Want to go get a card?
I'll go.
Okay.
Yeah.
And write it.
Mr. Worland, may I ask a question before you move on?
Sure.
Um, I, I noticed that of course, um, uh, Deviant Cava isn't on the agenda for today's meeting. Does the board attend on discussing it or not? I would certainly understand if, if you put it off until everyone's prepared. But we just want to know whether we should stick around for the whole meeting and listen to all of your other business or not.
It won't. No, we, when we put the agenda together, Taylor, we don't sneak things in typically. And if we are going to add things, we will say that at the beginning of the meeting typically. I mean, it's all about the sunshine law and making sure we are having open and transparent meetings. So, you know, we would definitely include you. The meeting Dr. Chaffay was referring to was basically a meeting when we were talking to counsel. And there is an allowance under sunshine law that when we are giving clarification from legal counsel, that those meetings don't have to be open. It was still announced that we had an executive session. But does that answer your question?
Yes, certainly. I, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't leave and then something relevant came up, uh, that it would have benefited us to hear.
We're not going to surprise you and talk behind your back. Absolutely.
Can I clarify something? There was a couple of things that were said that I'm, I'm thinking, I thought that was different than when we had met before. Uh, one of those is that there is a, a place in Midtown that is selling, uh, cava and cratom.
Yes. It has been operating for years. It actually just came under new ownership. And there was a newspaper article this week, uh, talking about how they sell traditional cava, cava mocktails, those items prepared exactly the way that we proposed it.
And we've been in many.
Yeah, and we have personally been and consumed it there.
Yeah.
Um, the second thing was, um, other retail stores have cratom and cava in their stores in Platte County.
Absolutely. The Clean Stop Gas Station that is half a mile from us sells them right to their energy drinks and all of that right at the.
But they're not mixing them.
Correct.
So they're, they're doing the same thing that we've asked. My understanding was you could add it to your tea in your store.
So what they are selling is prepared, retailed, canned drinks that have cava extract or cava essence in it as opposed to the brewed traditional tea that we would like to sell. I would equate it to a energy drink versus a latte. So while we would like to serve lattes, we are currently confined to serving energy drinks. And that is also what the gas stations and grocery stores and everywhere else is selling.
But in your store today, the person could purchase the tea?
No.
And then add it to it?
They can purchase the canned drinks and consume them.
Okay. Because that is, uh, retail.
But we cannot currently sell.
Because crazy, there's nothing that comes in like a Splenda or a creamer or anything like that.
I was also just going against, kind of, that's the bad part of it. Okay. That we don't do.
Yeah, it's, it's a much more concentrated and unregulated way to consume the product than the way that we would like to do it, which would be steeping it in water in a very much lower dose.
Okay. Thank you.
Andrew, I had, uh, I just something that, uh, I know when we talked about signage last time, that was something where any place that sells cava or cratom is going to need to put that signage up. Is that correct? When they renew or when they're?
We were going to be asking that upon the renewal.
Okay, yeah.
There was no good way to do it.
And it wasn't directly directed at, I was like, I don't remember any wordage that was directly towards like Deviant Cava has to do this or anything like that from, sorry, it's been a month, so.
Yeah, we would be asking that upon food permit renewals this year and advising people that.
Okay, okay, yeah.
That seemed to be the best.
Directed towards any specific location. So I was a little.
Yeah, that seemed to be the best way. And, you know, one of the things like the smoke shops and the CBD places, they do not have a retail food permit. They do not need one. And so we would, our rule would have no impact for them. It would only be the people with a current food permit.
I have another type of question. And there is currently an age limit on the products you're selling in your, in your.
Self-composed or by the state or federal?
By you.
Yes. Well, we're not, yes, for the county.
By you as a business owner, yes.
And not that one. Or in the same search.
So I think that.
The last thing I would, uh, the last thing I will say is, um, Andrew, if you wouldn't mind providing, uh, my cell number to the owners. Um, I, for the record, this is not about, uh, the health department. And in my opinion, targeting or mistreating anyone. We took a serious look at the, the, the rules and regulations and the, the charge set before us on food regulation and food permits in the county. Uh, so we're, we're, this isn't, uh, we've got it in against cratom. It's not a discussion about the merits or lack thereof of cratom at all. It, uh, so that's why I thought if we get together offline, look at things, I'm happy to have those discussions to try to clarify things and see where we stand on it. Because that's how these things evolve. So I, I want to, uh, uh, address the narrative that we are not open to having discussions about this at all. Uh, I can only speak for myself, of course, here right now. But certainly we need to look and we want businesses in Platte County. We want them to be successful. Uh, and that's why, uh, you know, I, I'm willing to, to, to try to figure this out and have meetings. Uh, you know, as long as we don't have three board members, which we'd have to announce. But, uh, I, I'd, I'd, I'd love to take a deeper dive and try to look at the situation to find a solution. Because clearly, I guess, uh, St. Charles County and, uh, now I guess Jackson County has found some kind of a solution, uh, to what our concerns were. So we, we may, we may need to revisit those. But I wanted to be clear on the record that we are very pro-business. We want to be, have you, help you in any way we can be successful, uh, down the road. Absolutely.
Would it be important to have a legal counsel there at that since we?
So, um, this has gone a little beyond public comment.
Yes.
And it's not on the agenda discussed. Okay. We have another executive session and have our legal counsel talk to us about the appropriate guidance at this point.
Okay.
Sorry, Susan. I just want to.
Okay, so let's move on.
No, I think that's appropriate. Yeah.
Yeah, it's time to move on.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Max, me too.
All right. Take care, everyone.
Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from our June 18th meeting. Did everyone get a chance to re-review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any changes, um, any, um, any you would like?
Nope.
To add, I move that we approve the minutes of June 18th, 2025.
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? And we can vote soon? Yes. Kim, yes?
Zach, yes.
Michael Chaffay, yes.
Jeff Kingsley, yeah.
I will turn it over to you, Anne.
Okay, so we'll go down to my report and it will be fairly brief. As I've mentioned, we continue to get pretty good traffic through the, um, for birth and duster tickets and food carts scroll down a little bit. You can kind of see that we are hitting some significant highs over the past several years. Just people coming here were pretty convenient. And I think the word's getting out this time last year, we had done, uh, 2,819 copies of birth and duster tickets. We've done about 3,900 this year, so about a thousand more, only about 50 more people. So I guess they're coming and want to buy a lot. But almost double the number of food carts, so not sure exactly why that's happening, but that's positive. Just seeing all the young people and babies and older people just coming in and utilizing the facility. Uh, the alarm went off maybe a month and a half ago. And it was because some kids were staying at the hotel. And it was because some kids were staying at the hotel for a baseball tournament and they were out in the parking lot playing baseball. And someone came up to get in the shade, I think, and they hit the button on the door and that made the motion detector go off, but it was fun seeing. Well, it was fun and the, when I looked to see what was happening, it was just kids playing. So that was interesting.
And we need a playground or something.
Well, there's a huge grass field that they elected to play in the.
Parking lot, parking lot, yeah.
Um, we do continue to have some humidity issues that are way better. And now they are just technically in certain areas of the building. Straub and Hales, so Straub is the general contractor and Hales were out on July 2nd. We, uh, have kind of formed a task force of staff who are learning to use all the ther- thermostats. And they're kind of the go-to people in each of the wings as things need to be adjusted. Because obviously Taylor and I are not in every single wing all the time. So that is working out well. We're getting some good help from the staff. Dustin and Don Fadre are response planner and Rebecca, all the, they're intimately familiar with the thermostats now.
Never said that before.
Yeah, programmed and reprogrammed and they are all set right. Um, we're finding a few things that we're fixing just with some of the venting and stuff allowing outdoor air intrusion. So we're not quite done, but we're getting closer every day.
Next week should be your.
Yeah, and it's interesting, you know, they were here on July 2nd, which was the nicest day we probably had in 60.
Okay.
It was probably like a high of like 83.
And yet it.
And that's not the best day to test. Uh, but other days, we can, when it's really hot like yesterday or really humid like it was yesterday, those are excellent times to be able to tell what's going on. So we are getting there.
Do you feel like it's a learning curve on how to manage it or is it still a problem?
There are issues with at least one RTU that keeps opening up to bring in outside air, like fully open and it's trying to air condition hot, humid air. So that's something new that we've discovered in the past couple of weeks. But hopefully that's a pretty, that's not a buy new equipment. That's like, the equipment just needs to fix to run right and it's still under warranty. So it shouldn't be, at least the part should be under warranty. So it shouldn't be any kind of big crazy thing, but.
Okay.
Until it's actually all fixed and this is the time, this is the most hot and humid part of the year. So this is the time where we can really figure out what's going on in May. It's, I can't tell.
True.
Uh, I'm not sure who all came to Dan's retirement, but it was on June 26th. And I think the feedback I got was, it was a pretty nice celebration of his 33 years, 18 months, wherever Cindy went, oh, you, that's not where you usually sit. But it was a great celebration and there were happy tears or sad tears or a little bit of both. But we are certainly going to miss Dan and there's a link if you weren't here and want to watch his video tribute. It got laughs and tears, I think, so it was very nicely done by Jill, who you met earlier tonight. She did a very nice job. Uh, one of the things I talked to Dr. Chaffay and Kingsley about, and Dr. Kingsley last week, it's been a while since I've talked to Dr. Chaffay, but bringing back the Missouri Association of Local Boards of Health, the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, Services Director, Sarah Wilson, had been here and I guess we had, Dan and I had done a pretty convincing job of getting this moving. They had met with Mossefi, which is the Missouri Center for Public Health Excellence. And they are kind of leading the exploration into that. I'm a little impatient, so I had also talked to the Missouri Public Health Association. So I may have actually caused more problems than done good. But between everybody, there is going to be some discussions about how to move forward. Larry Jones, who's with Mossefi, has reached out to me to talk to me about what that might look like. And he has some ideas. He is my old boss that I worked for at, for 14 years at the City of Independence. So we have a good working relationship. I know him very well. But he is, uh, at some point, and I assume Dr. Kingsley and Dr. Chaffay, you would have no problem meeting or if you want to, um, ask someone else on the board, but I know you guys are both very interested in being part of that. And he asked a lot of the same questions that you all have asked me. So at some point we'll have that conversation, assuming you're both still on board or whoever you delegate.
I'm on. Mike, you still, you still on board too?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think we've got a unique perspective to provide and recognize the needs of the counties that don't have the resources. And as a state, I think we can set an example of trying to provide information and resources to the smaller counties and, and some outside the box thinking to try to, you know, do things in the state of Missouri that, uh, could help improve the health and wellness of everybody.
So yesterday morning Larry and I had got an hour-long conversation, but you just summed up in like 20 seconds. So I guess we need you to interpret, but that was exactly the conversation that we had yesterday. Uh, as far as the budget, we are at 50% of the year already. Uh, which is amazing to me every year, but we are about 77%, uh, 76.9% of our revenues. And as we know, those come at the beginning and the end of the year. That expenditures were almost exactly at 50%. Uh, our money market balance, we are, you know, going about the right ways, like I've mentioned, as we move into moving things to pay off the lease purchase and our reserve accounts, that is going to be a little bit down from the year before. So we don't have any crazy excesses. We are moving those monies to where they need to go. Um, still at 2.88% interest and we are about 200,000. We paid about 197, 690 off in the past 12 months compared to last year off our lease purchase. So go ahead and scroll down. And that's all I have. Taylor?
Hello, everyone. Um, sorry that I'm not there in person today. I'm at the NACO, the National Association of City and County Health Officials Conference in Anaheim right now. Um, as far as updates, um, last month we had both the Fire Marshal and Jayhawk Sprinkler came out um, and did inspections on the fire hydrants, exit signs, as well as our Friar sprinkler system. Um, and for both of those, we passed the safety inspection, so we're good with all of that stuff. Um, I think a large amount of the last month or two has been dedicated to some handoffs, doing just some onboarding for, for my position and then for Rebecca with her previous position. And then we've also been hiring, uh, or trying to fill her health educator position. So a lot has been just getting used to new roles and doing some handoffs and learning some new, new areas. Um, and I've been thrown right into it with the whole cava and kratom discussion, so. Um, a couple of just like general grant updates. And I think we might've already mentioned this, but the public health emergency, emergency preparedness, um, and city is called FEP and then also the city readiness initiative is CRI. Um, so we found out that they are currently only going to be funding half of the FEP contract, so for now. Um, and then the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services mentioned that they are going to be working on a continuing resolution in order to help us get the rest of that funding. So we got about $20,000 cut. They're trying to get that money back and we'll see what happens with that. Um, but on the positive side, we did with our childcare health consultation program, we were able to get an extra $10,000 from that grant. Um, so our health educator or our health education supervisor is working on that and that money is just going to be used for personnel fringe travels and supplies for the health ed program. Uh, we have a public health intern, um, Krupa, so she's going to be doing a discussion later, so I won't steal too much of her thunder. Um, she's going to be talking about our customer satisfaction survey and give a little bit of information around that. Um, had lots of events and trainings throughout the month of June. I also put a lot of information around our committees. I think strategic planning committee is probably the biggest. So I know we had said we were going to do strategic planning at this meeting. We are going to be moving that again to August meeting. So Taylor Anderson from Mossefi, the Missouri Center for Public Health Excellence is going to be coming for that and running that session. Um, I think we've talked a lot about health literacy and using plain language, um, simple words, making things more concise and easier to understand for the public. Um, so we just wanted to go through and make sure that we're also practicing what we preach. So we want to make all of our plans be health literate and use plain language words, um, and make things a little bit more simplified. So we just, we needed a little bit more time to kind of fine tune that. Um, so she will be coming next month and I won't go too much into all of the committees and things because I don't want to steal too much of Rebecca's thunder. Um, but then we also have been doing strategic planning with the Northland Health Alliance as well. And then, um, so I, I think we maybe talked about it a little bit last month, but so I will now be overseeing the accreditation, um, with Rebecca overseeing communicable disease and emergency response. And then I'm also overseeing health education and environmental health. So some of the envi- or health education updates for this month. Um, I, there was a Feed Northland Kids yearly meeting. So that's an organization that is working towards, uh, reducing, uh, food or, uh, hunger and food insecurity. Um, and then we also had some, another safe sitter course with 14 participat- or 14 participants. Um, and lots of just, just other meetings, lots of other great things going on. Um, and yeah, I only took over towards the end of last month, so I will give a little bit more details next time, but. Any, any questions on those?
Yes, I have a question, Taylor. How the heck do you have time to do any of this stuff if you're busy playing at Disneyland and California Adventure?
I know, I know.
Oh, my God.
Hey, I've just been doing everything in between meetings and trying to keep up with everything, learning new things. So there's a lot going on.
Okay, okay.
But trying, trying to do it all, you know.
So one thing I will mention is during our fire inspection that Taylor talked about, we do have a private fire hydrant over by the garage, behind the garage. And when it was tested and it was turned on, it leaked. So there's a repair that needs to be made and it leaks below ground. So there's going to have to be some excavation done. How much? I don't think it's super serious, but we are waiting on at least one estimate to see where it's going to go. Then we'll determine whether we have to put that out for bid, but there is.
So, so, Andrew, I'm confused. So was it never turned on before or has it been on this whole time? And it was just checked? So I guess my question is, has it been leaking this whole time?
So it only leaks when it's turned on and basically.
It's not been turned on lately?
It gets inspected annually, so whenever they inspect it, they turn it on. This year it leaked when they turned it on. Last year it did not.
Okay, so when you say turn it on, just when they just open it up to let the water fly out is what you're saying?
Right. They test it to make sure if we needed to use it for a fire, water comes out, just like you said.
Right. So when it's not opened up though? So when it's not opened up, it's not leaking, I guess is my question.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so it only leaks when we're actually using it?
Right.
Okay.
That's what they wrote in the report.
Yeah, I'll chime in real quick because I have experience with this. My building also has a, um, a private fire hydrant that I have to go out and turn on and take pictures for the Fire Marshal and send them to him. Uh, you're looking at a thousand dollars to excavate that, to get to it and then to repair. If it's just the valve, you'll have to get guts to it. So you're, you're looking at a few thousand dollars for sure, just as a heads up. But I think once you get somebody else out there with experience who's done this before, we'll be able to determine if, if and when we need to put it out for bid.
Yeah, I'm thinking it'll be under $3,000 and we'll be able to just have them do it, but we'll see.
Fingers crossed.
Exactly.
Sorry, so let's go to Austin. All right, um, so continuing to give our basic, what we're working on is getting it for back to school season. Um, hoping, trying to capture many young, uh, caregivers especially with like the measles outbreak going on throughout the US. We're trying, I'm sure, Susan, I'm sure you're probably already for all of these conversations, but, uh, I'm working with Jill. We're trying to get a video, trying to just encourage parents, bring their kids in starting now, that way they're not in like the big rush. Calm the last.
No, they won't calm the.
We still got to try. But yeah.
Give it a good shot.
One day. Um, we did have a watch and learn with, uh, we're GSK, GSK vaccine representatives. Uh, they're trying to go over some of the new changes. Uh, you've seen like the new, uh, meningococcal combination. It's got, uh, Ben ACWY groups as well as the meningitis P and a combo for those who are 16 years or Asian older. So that's now a product we'll be able to start up, um, providing to clients coming in. Um, we've still been working on getting all their, uh, new cards updated, uh, as well. They begin preparations for their breastfeeding awareness week, uh, next month. Uh, so to be pretty excited about that. Um, but to get all the survey results from Salk this month, they had three really good reviews. Uh, one they had, uh, was pretty negative. Um, he only answered a few questions. Uh, I did speak with their clinic manager. She kind of shared some more information with me about it. Um, essentially she reached out to him. He didn't really want to talk about his experience that he'd given her a chance. Um, but she did give him, uh, her personal information that if he did change his mind and wanted to discuss it more, to contact her. But that's just a little asterisk for, uh, that one outlier. Everything else was all five-star ratings. Um, they really seem to love Zara over there and, uh, what they're doing. Um, their numbers still pretty consistent. That's what we've been seeing. Um, a little bit shorter than what we've seen in, uh, our family healthcare clinic a year ago, but they're still working on trying to recruit new clients. Um, I did learn yesterday, they have their patient support specialist who comes in and helps those enroll in like Medicaid. Uh, they lost one of the grants that helped support those positions, so they had to cut back about 50% of their staff for it. So they said they may not be able to be here as often as they once were since they're trying to cover multiple different clinics now. Uh, they'll have fewer individuals. Um, it said, those physicians are like fully funded by grants, so, um, there's one more grant that is on the table. Um, so they're seeing where that might go, so that may not be a service they'll be able to provide. Um, I'll be working with some others and trying to max them up to alternatives to continue providing that service here. So, um, that's about all I have, my report. Are there any questions?
All right, so it's been a wonderful three weeks in this division. Um, so obviously the biggest service is accreditation right now and we have until December the 3rd, which is rapidly approaching to get a hang in. Um, you'll notice that this is the first time that all of the domains, all of the scheduling spreadsheet have something on there. So I've been working on that over the three weeks and we're finalizing the strategic plan. Um, I did attend the, um, Missouri Center for Public Health Excellence accreditation retreat. And that is where everyone who's working in accreditation in the area got together and they presented and we talked about a couple of topics, but mostly we learned from each other. And I got a lot of wonderful tips and tricks and we've been emailing back and forth of like, how did you handle this and that? Yes, that's a wonderful group and we might start a group chat. Um, so for strategic planning, Taylor already kind of touched on it. Um, we're going to push it to next month because again, we want to continue to be concise and achievable. Uh, so we should have that presented next month and looking forward to rolling that out on what we're planning to do for the next five years. Um, quality improvement committee, so that's kind of the big push of the accreditation is it forces you to look into how we better. Um, quality improvement committee. So that's kind of the big push of the accreditation is it forces you to look into how we better serving our people. And, um, how can we improve that? You know, can we make it faster, cheaper? What can we do for the people? So we have a committee that meets every month, uh, actually meeting a little bit more often right now, and we're creating a performance management system. So this system basically lays out what are our programs and what are our goal streaks programs? And then at the end of the year, we can see, did we hit those goals? If we did not, what are we going to do to make it better? Um, the workforce development committee, uh, meets generally monthly and we are now working with a PhD, uh, student who's going to help us write that workforce development plan. How can we make the workforce that we have better and more of a goal to serve the people contracting? So we're working on those big plans of how we're going to make ourselves better and more receptive to the people. Um, so policies and procedures, that's more so Taylor's wheelhouse. Uh, we're working on updating our policies, making them simple, straightforward, so we can look at it and do something effective. Um, as far as Northland Health Alliance, that is also a little bit more of Taylor's purview. Um, but basically we've been working with the Northland Health Alliance to, uh, publish the community health assessment results from that big assessment that we recently did. And then we're also creating the key health improvement plan as well with them to uh, improve the lives and livelihoods of all those in the Northland. Um, so a lot of our, uh, my epidemiologist is working to help that be published on the dashboard. Um, and to make this not the Rebecca show, um, I have three wonderful employees. So I want to start, uh, changing my board report where I highlight what we're doing in emergency management and epidemiology because they're attending wonderful trainings and they're, um, you know, staying, keeping a pulse in the community. So, um, my big push now that I'm in this role is to try to cross train. Uh, let's say our epidemiologist is out sailing on a cruise and something happens. We can't tell the community, sorry, we can't help you. Aaron's gone. So we need to be able to learn enough about each other's roles to keep the home fires burning. Um, because we need to always be ready to help the community. So, yes. So again, it can't be that one lady's gone. We're, we're up a creek. So, uh, it takes, it's going to start with me learning a little bit more about these positions and then they're going to learn a little bit about each other's jobs. So that we could be more effective and more responsive. So, um, for our emergency management, the big highlight is that, um, two of my employees, one of our, uh, our case investigator, disease investigator and our emergency response planner, both attended emergency response to domestic biological incidents training. Um, so this is a really helpful course in case something naturally occurs or intentional, how do we respond to these issues? Um, and then also our emergency response planner is working on continuity of operations plans and our emergency operations plan. So what do we do if something happens? Where do we go? Um, for epidemiology, they have tracked all the different diseases and conditions. And this is kind of what we're looking at for this month. I think our big highlight is a cluster case of protestis that was in one family. Um, so working to get those resources there and obviously the worst years, just so we can get out and knowledge better. That is about all for me. Who has questions?
I do. Uh, those, that protestis outbreak, were they immunized? Did they all receive their full rounds as, uh? Okay, that, I was just trying to make sure because. Okay.
It was a family of unvaccinated individuals. So it went around the children.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
So Cindy Kogan, would you update the agenda for next time for, to say accreditation and Q I manager? Um, it's wrong in the agenda, so if you would fix that. Susan? Finance committee?
Finance committee. We met on Tuesday, the eighth of July and, um, Dawn from the finance area, it gave us a report about, uh, transferring from Central Bank to Notaway Bank. You'll notice our checks, I noticed are Notaway checks this time that we signed. Um, so we went through everything that she's kind of been through and giving the staff debit cards versus credit cards and just trying to figure out each of the items that goes on to changing over a banking, a bank. Um, I think Ryan Stewart from Notaway came that afternoon and met with the staff. That was the plan to go through, um, to talk about their deposits, how deposits would go, the AP payroll and the debit system. Cindy, help me there anywhere. And, uh, anything else you want to say about that?
About the banking? No, I mean, that's a lot.
It's a lot and a little complicated with some things where.
We are still using, you know, Central Bank for a couple of things to do with pushing through credit card charges and stuff. But my gosh, the number of things that I've had to sign and approve through DocuSign.
Are they called?
Every little change, every little change. And they verify my personal information and it's like, did you live on this? So it's just funny because there's all these random questions. Uh, by hand me, so that's good.
And they had me also do that. I have a password and had an okay for them to transfer some monies over. But yeah, I think we were going to leave some in Central to cover things that were still kind of out there, out there. Um, then we also, Michelle kind of gave a report on pay velocity. Michelle and Cindy, how did the fifth payroll go?
Uh, it, it went, okay. And now it would, we still have a small, a small glitch that's still trying to be worked out. Okay, but we have a workaround so that we don't have any issues with anybody's payroll. Okay.
Yeah, a few employees lost little bits, did not, it was very small amounts, but a few of them didn't. And some of them didn't even realize they were missing that, some of their gifts. So that continues to be, um, hopefully, hopefully that's going to get smoother as time goes on. Um, they decided to hold back on implementing the human resources part of pay velocity until we can get everything to payroll.
Really smoothly supposed to start that this next week and we have deferred it, I guess. Okay. So we can get payroll side all.
These people do like to get paid.
They do and while, yeah.
Uh, yes, Dr. Kingsley?
I just, I hate when I have to do this. It makes me sick to my stomach, but I have to say, I told you so. Let me pat myself on the back again.
That wasn't sincere.
Not seem genuine, but okay.
I know. That seemed a little feisty.
Yeah.
I said, what did I say? I said, you know what? Whenever you implement a brand new computer, anything, there's always going to be bugs. No matter how easy they tell you it's going to be, there's always something that happens. This is crazy, but that's the way it is.
And I think that's kind of what Michelle said. She says, next time I ever say, I want to change something, please stop me.
Change is hard.
Change is hard.
I believe the payroll before was the.
The one that.
The day right after Dan's party.
Oh.
And so we're doing all that stuff and then she's still here late and I was here. And we had a power glitch and we had a contactor on one of the fans. It's been fixed now, but it was making this loud screeching sound. Well, she's said something like, it's like, I'm trying to get this and that thing's buzzing. So I helped her by switching off a breaker, but I wasn't exactly sure which breaker. I thought I was steering clear of her office, but of course I shut off her computer. So I did help her a lot, right in the middle of doing that.
Right?
Yes, but I did find the contactor, um, breaker and make the noise stop. But at the expense of putting.
Potentially losing her.
Yes.
All of the work.
But she didn't kill me, so we're good.
And she keeps coming back to work. Very happy about that. When we go pick her up.
Um, so financial report, anything?
Talk about what was going on back there?
We are excited about moving to the human resources side, especially as we, you know, are going through the process now of hiring a health educator. But we, and I'm a hundred percent on board, we need to get our payroll side fixed and then we can, you know, let's get that fixed and focused. Like Dr. Kingsley said, there's always a glitch. So I hate to say he's right, but he is right. Reviewing the bills?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we pay our bills.
Seconded.
Vote. Sue? Yes. Kim is a yes?
Zach's a yes.
Michael Shaw face a yes.
Jeff Kingsley's a.
Um, we, the resolution?
We did have one this month. Um, we increased the price and the cost to uh, client for typhoid to a hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
From?
Ninety-five. To what? Ninety, it was ninety-five and we went up to a hundred and fifty-eight.
The big gap is that as they used to provide it in multi-dose, like twenty dose, multi-dose vials, uh, they no longer manufacture that. There are now only single dose syringes, which that's where the increased cost comes from.
So just need to approve the fee resolution.
Yes. I move to approve the fee resolution, uh, for health services and vaccine fee schedule amended September twentieth, twenty-eleven.
Seconded.
I vote Sue? Yes. Kim, yes?
Zach, yes.
Michael Shaw face a yes.
Okay, so the, we have one item of new business. And I will introduce Krupa Shaw.
I think we're wrapping up here in a few minutes.
Um, go ahead. Take the stand up there. We won't swear you in. Um, those of you online, can you see Krupa's PowerPoint?
Yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Krupa Shaw and I'm currently a public health intern here at the Flat County Health Department. Today I'll be sharing a quick overview of our customer satisfaction survey project.
You may need to scoot up a little further just so they can hear you online. So speak loud.
Okay, so I'm going to start again.
Andrew, she's fine. We, I can, we can hear her just fine. Absolutely fine.
Okay. Well, today I'll be sharing a quick overview of our customer satisfaction survey project, which is part of our effort to improve services through direct client feedback. A little bit about me, um, I'm from Hoffman Estates, Illinois, which is a northwest suburb of Chicago. I'm currently a master in public health student at the New York University where I'm focusing on community health science and practice. Um, I got my bachelor's through the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign where I majored in molecular and cellular biology as well as Spanish. My long-term career goal is to become a pediatric cardiologist where I can combine clinical work, um, alongside the public health work. I love dancing, specifically Bollywood fusion dancing, which is a dance style from India and it's combined with any other dance form. Um, you name it, from contemporary hip hop to jazz. Um, I also love traveling and a fun fact about me is that I can speak four different languages.
Wow.
Well, now let's get into the survey. Um, so when we put this survey together, we really thought about like the client perspective. Um, we wanted to make sure that the survey is health literate, simple, fast, mobile friendly and something people would actually want to do. Um, so we needed to make it appealing, which is why we're offering an incentive to participate and I'll talk more about it in the next slides. Um, we also wanted to make it accessible, so we will be offering this survey in Spanish as well, um, moving forward. And since that is one of like another common language that is spoken among the people that come in. Um, we're exploring how to expand this in any other languages, um, if need be, um, just down the road. Um, but for now, this helps us increase our accessibility and make clients feel included. Um, so the purpose of the customer satisfaction survey is to understand how clients experience our services um, as well as identify specific areas where we as the public health department can improve. Also strengthen our relationship with the community through transparency and responsiveness. Our goal is mainly to listen to the voice of the community and use that insight to guide continuous quality improvement. We're also using this survey and the data we collect to contribute to, um, accreditation efforts and to improve the services we provide to the community. So we created our survey, um, in a short format, um, using Microsoft Forms. And it takes the users, um, less than two minutes to complete. The feedback is completely anonymous. And if participants choose to enter the gift card drawing, then they will need to provide their name, phone number and email address. But that is a separate section, um, to protect the integrity of their responses. Um, so let me walk you through our survey. Can you zoom into that, Justin?
You can scroll right. Good?
Yes, okay. Thank you. Um. So we first, of course, um, start off by asking what is the main reason for your visit today? And options, um, as you can see include, did you come in for like a birth or death certificate? Healthcare services, um, environmental health ranging from food safety, restaurants to sewage control, um, as well as WIC. And if it was any other option that's not mentioned there, then they have the flexibility to just write it down in the other box. Um, if they do select healthcare services, which is what I will do just to show you guys. Um, another dropdown question pops up where they can check any other services that apply to healthcare, um, that they came in for. Whether that was vaccines, um, T V services, S T I S T D services, um, as well as the Silk Health Clinic and Beacon Mental Health. And if there was a healthcare service that they came in for that isn't listed here, they also have the flexibility, um, to select other and jot it down. Um, the third question that we asked is, um, did they get any other additional services? Sometimes clients do come in for more than one thing and we just want to know what the other, um, services that you're coming in for. But we did not make this question required because if you only came in for one service, it doesn't make sense that you have to answer this question. Um, the next question that we asked is how did you hear about our services? We want to know, um, where you're finding our information out from, whether it's an internet search, is it a referral? Um, is it through like your primary care doctor, um, hospital, social media, um, or any other, um, option?
So Krupa, I think our website would be something I would want on there.
Website? Okay.
Our website.
Okay, that's something I could, um, add on to that as well.
And I was going to ask a question because it just came to my, and I'm sorry I didn't ask it before, but, um, if they wanted just to come in to get an R can, is that, was that in the first part? I missed that.
It wasn't a selection, but there is that other column where that could kind of fall away.
Okay, okay.
And then another question that we also want to know is, um, what tur- what form of transport did you use to get here? So how did you get here today? Did you drive yourself? Um, did a friend or family member give you a ride? Did you use a ride sharing service? Or just public transport or any other form, like whether you walked or biked or something like that? Um, so that was something that we wanted to incorporate. Um, we also asked, um, like how they would rate our service. Um, and we like to use like the star rating to assess their experience with one being like worst experience, five being the best experience. Um, we believe that the star rating is very simple. It's visual. Um, it's also more user friendly, um, compared to numbers and like the likelihood scale. And it's especially easy for clients with low, um, health literacy. Um, so the next few questions incorporate that star rating scale. Um, so we also wanted to know what the ease of using our services was like, um, how friendly and helpful our staff was. And then, um, to kind of end off the survey, we said, what did you like about your visit and what can we do to improve? So with these questions being open-ended, um, we did not make them required and we kind of just want to see what our strengths are as the public health department as well as any suggestions that, um, the community has that we could incorporate into our, um, department. Um, altogether, this survey does give us the qualitative, um, side of data, um, as well as the quantitative, um, side too, um, to drive any improvements that need be. And then to encourage participation, we're offering, um, a twenty-five-dollar gift card drawing for QuickTrip or Walmart. So once they submit that survey, basically a pop-up will come up saying, thanking them for their feedback. And then a link to another Microsoft Forms where they can, um, put in their information and enter for that drawing. Um, so we decided to choose QuickTrip or Walmart specifically because QuickTrip is simple, widely accessible. It has like everything, like snacks, food, convenience, um, that's appealing to everyone. And similarly to Walmart, it's, um, inclusive of all socioeconomic classes. And it offers something for everyone. It's not just tailored towards like one age group. And especially since we serve a wider age range, um, um, with our like state sitter classes where we have, um, individuals that come in that are under eighteen, that's something that they could go to and get whatever they want from Walmart. Um, also with the gift card drawing, um, we kind of kept this in mind because one of our neighboring counties, um, even after being accredited, um, they typically only get like about two responses a month. And we want to have a wider range of clients, not just solely selected to one or two, because you could have it on the far left of the spectrum or far right of the spectrum. And it doesn't do a good job in getting us, um, insight us into what we could do better.
So we have talked about that in our group, but Dr. Kingsley and I talked about it during our one-on-one too. If you're only giving two, um, responses, what you're giving is people that are either really mad or they're really happy.
Yeah.
Usually it's mad, but sometimes really happy people will take the time. And what we wanted to do, you know, last year, when Taylor was here at the back-to-school fair with Maggie, our intern, trying to do the community health assessment, it was an eighteen-page thing. People for a five-dollar QuickTrip gift card? I don't think she had any people that walked away once they found that they could get a five-dollar gift card. So we just felt like this drawing concept, you know, we can't give everyone five dollars. We'd go broke. But we can do twenty-five dollars. You know, that's, you know, three hundred dollars a year. It's a pretty small investment to get a much better range of responses. And Krupa was very intentional about making it, you know, mobile device-friendly. They can take a picture, do the QR code, do it really quick and get entered. And, you know, enter as often as they like. I think she's, she is kind of mean. She's like, you can only win once every three months or something, but.
Have to have some guidelines.
But it
Oh, yeah. If you came in, I'll come in again.
But hopefully it will spur some really good, uh, responses. And if it does, I think they're already talking about, you know, there's like a model practice program or innovation award. This will be the best surveys ever. So I really appreciate what the team did. You know, looking at all the different options of how to get participation. Um, I'll let you back to your regular scheduled program.
Yeah, basically I was gonna touch on that point that Taylor and an intern from last summer, you know, had that gift card thing and that really boosted participation. So that's where, you know, this idea also like adds to it. And we're like, you know, this could be something that will work. Um, the drawing is, like I said, completely separate from the satisfaction survey. So clients can give honest, um, feedback without having to worry that, hey, our name is being jotted down with our responses. Um, in terms of selecting a winner, we will be using, um, Excel where we have a random generator function. Um, so every month after responses are collected, the following month, within the first week, we will be selecting a winner that way. And they will be notified and they will have, um, seven days to respond back. If nobody responds back, then we will just do another random generator again.
And Dustin found our, kind of ruined my plan. I was just going to pick my friends to win, but he's like, no, we should make it random. So that's probably a better warfare.
And then we're promoting the survey with putting these like flyers up, um, in different areas of the building.
Oh, awesome.
Just little samples.
So they'll be framed and put on the walls?
Yeah. So basically it has a QR code for instant access, making it mobile-friendly. Um, a clear reminder of the gift card drawing. Um, and like I said, it will be posted through various areas of our building, um, within the front lobby, the WIC clinic, um, just our clinic in general. And we'll also be encouraging our staff to promote it as well. Be like, hey, like as you're exiting, like after your service, we would love for you to fill out this feedback form. Um, and you can enter for a chance to win a gift card as well. Um, another thing that I wanted to point out, um, since on our survey, we do have, um, the soap clinic as well as Beacon Mental Health. So Andrew and Dustin have, um, got in touch with Soap and told them that, hey, like we're doing a survey. So any feedback we receive will also be provided to you. And, um, Beacon Mental Health has been contacted as well. So we're just waiting to hear back from them on that terms. Um.
So as you all know, Soap does their own survey.
Okay.
But on ours, we ask what service you're going to be doing. And so we wanted to make sure that if there was pertinent feedback for them, that they were getting it. Because it could be good or bad or whatever, but everyone wants that feedback to know what we're, what they're doing well and what we can improve on.
And then our survey, um, it's basically the Platte County Health Department is committed to providing a positive experience for everyone we serve. So our customers, um, feedback helps shape the way we care for our community. The survey is currently, um, set to go live on August first, so we can collect a full month's of data, um, seeing where improvements, um, can be made. Thank you so much for your time and attention. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have or any feedback that you have as well.
I think you did a wonderful job. This is, this is a cool idea.
Yeah, thank you.
For sure. So, so how have you enjoyed your experience here?
I actually love it here. I love every single person. Um, they make me feel super comfortable, support me in every way possible. Um, each and every person I have a separate connection with. Um, I never have to hesitate to go to any office and be like, hey, I need help with this, or hey, um, could you assist me further with this? I always have something to do, um, not just sitting around, but I also have fun while being here too. I'm just grateful for everyone.
So I think as you all have seen our different interns come through and it's like, one of the things that's really important to me is that every person coming through get an experience of what it would be like to really work here.
Yes.
So sometimes that's challenging. Because a lot of times these folks are coming in right from school and it is a little bit different environment. And it's not always like, write a twenty-page paper. Well, my feeling is anyone can write a twenty-page paper, but can you save that same amount of stuff in a page or a half a page? That is really difficult. And I think Krupa has definitely withstood the challenge. And while some folks may think, oh, Andrew will just take it totally easy on her because she's an intern. I don't think that's the case, right, Krupa? But she has been fantastic. The team has been fantastic in supporting her. You know, today before her big show with you all, I got to play Dr. Shaffay. But we, um, can you hit the mouse and turn this off? But we got to, uh, kind of role-play and let her practice and get her pointers and, you know, have, she had done a great job getting the majority of the stuff in. But I think it's really valuable and you'll be able to tell us as you exit your experience. But hopefully it's valuable to you in the future. We greatly appreciate all the work you're doing. And, you know, I think you did a great job.
I agree. Good job.
Yeah, I think, good job. Um, it's a great little survey and I think it's gonna be useful for a long time for these guys. Um, as far as like public speaking goes, always, always hard to do. You know, it's something, especially if you're gonna be looking at going to medical school in the future, you're gonna be doing lots of interviews and stuff and it'll be tense. So, you know, uh, working on that kind of stuff in these kind of settings is always, you know, a good experience to have. Um, biggest thing, uh, I would say was just, you know, watching those filler words and stuff, uh, thinking ahead of like, what am I gonna say next? How am I gonna expand this to get to the next part? Be the, the biggest thing, keep things flowing.
Thank you.
I, I have a quick question. Quick question. Um, are, can you share with me, uh, Andrew or anybody, uh, how many other health departments are doing something like this?
So
Ten percent, ten percent?
And then Krupa can add in. Um, but anyone who's getting accredited, it's an accreditation requirement. And so the requirement is that you do a survey and that you do something with the information. But as you know, I like to research everything before we do it. And so one of the things Krupa was directed to do was work with her team here and go out and see what everyone else is doing. And like one of our peers, who we are fairly competitive with, they have a fairly nice survey. It's a little longer, but they get two responses a month. You're not going to do, like, that's not going to impact your services. That just isn't going to do anything.
Okay, so we're doing better than other people. That's, that's what I wanted to know. And I, I, I just think that the main thing here is you guys are, i- it's wonderful because when I did a Grok search on Platte County Health Department, an AI search, it actually drilled down to the fact that we had done a children's services research paper and posted it on our website. It commented that we were above average for, you know, survey, things like this. So these things, I just wanted everybody to be aware. Not only did you do a good job with it, but it, it really benefits the citizens of Platte County as we're becoming a better and better health department. So, and, and that when an AI generator can look in and see we're doing things like this, I just, you need to know that I, I think it's, uh, everybody's gonna take notice.
Yeah, Grok approved. We'll get a class thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, so Taylor, we're not going to get Fab accredited. We are just going to have Grok approved.
Okay. It's its own type of accreditation, right?
We're a cutting edge. Just kidding.
Any other comments for Krupa?
Good job.
Good job.
Yeah, just good.
Great job.
Okay, I guess I do have one question. How much longer before your, your internship is done? Now like, you got a few more weeks or what were we, what are we talking about?
Um, I'm here for about two more weeks until the end of July.
And do you know anyone who lives in the area or just came here?
Just came here, yeah.
But, but now we've got our tour and some med schools around here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And across the meetings and she met some different doctors in the field. Maybe, maybe this may not be the answer.
Maybe, maybe I'll be back in casey. We'll see.
Very good.
So Krupa has been very brave. She came here not knowing anybody and is living down in the Westport area, I think.
Yeah.
Um, getting to experience Kansas City and, you know, has picked up some friends along the way. So wonderful to have you here.
Oh, what the other thing? Spanish and English, obviously.
Yes.
Other two languages.
Um, Gujarati and Hindi.
Okay.
The languages of India.
Does your family at home?
Can you give us speeches and what? Susan, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I, we started, started this, you know, addition, uh, do your, does your family that you grew up with speak Hindi or?
Um, so our main language is Gujarati, but like in terms, so like how there's Hollywood, there's Bollywood. And Bollywood mainly is like, you know, whatever language they use is Hindi. So that's like the universal language of India. So anything I picked up was from Bollywood movies. Um, my parents can speak it. Um, but that's not their like primary language from India. It's Gujarati. So even in, at home and stuff with grandparents and relatives, it's typically like Gujarati or English, like your next.
Yeah, okay. It's cool.
How are you at translating? Because having surveys and stuff also in Spanish is, is definitely something that I know a lot of medical schools and residency programs, uh, have been
Overdose. Yeah. Um, so with Spanish, yeah, I could read, write, speak, translate it. Um, of course, recently I haven't had much practice with it, so my conjugation might not be on par. But with Hindi and Gujarati, I can't read or write it, but I can do a very good job at like speaking and translating it. Uh, that's something I do back home too, because I work as a part-time medical assistant. And the community that comes in speaks Gujarati or Hindi, so I have quite a bit with that, but.
That's pretty good. So we are fortunate that Taylor is great at translating and writing things in the right way in Spanish. So maybe we'll have you do it and she can grade. And she's a mean grader for me, so I hope she passes that on to you.
Constructive feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
And I think that takes us tend to the next meeting and then adjourn.
Yes. Next meeting, August twenty-first at six PM. Um, and we get to
Can I bring up a quick question? So Andrew, so when do you want to do the executive meeting to go over all the stuff that we talked about at the start of the meeting?
I will send out an email later in a couple of weeks. Um, I sent something to Bailey to set up a meeting with staff and Jen. So we can discuss where everything's at and then we'll set up something and have an executive session.
I, I would like to hear their, the, their side of the story and I'd like to hear our side of the story. And then try to figure out a way, is there a happy solution to the problem? That's what I hope to be doing.
I'll discuss that.
Okay, very good. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I just don't want to have any meeting. I don't want to discuss something not on the meeting.
Right.
But thank you for clarifying that. I, I appreciate that. Okay, can, uh, if there's nothing further, can we get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I've moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I think Shaffay's ready to go. He's jumping that lake.
You're jumping the lake.
Where do we need a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Kim, yes?
Zach, yes.
Dr. Shaffay?
Maybe. Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
Jeff Kingsley, yes. Hey, Kim, thanks for running the meeting.
Sure.
Yes.
Good job. All right, goodbye.
Good to meet you all. Bye, Dr. Shaffay. Bye, Dr. Kingsley.
Bye, everybody. Bye.
Bye, John.